Commissioner Welch, I know I've been gone the last. I'd also like to to thank Commissioner Welch for stepping in in my absence. So thank you for that. Jenny, I didn't have a chance to talk to you beforehand, but do you have a flag for us?
I'm sure hoping David does. And I wanted to acknowledge that Linda did call in with an excuse absence. So we're not there yet. Excuse me.
It's okay. Yeah, I'll I'll make note of that, too. I got that as well. Thank you, David. So with that, if everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll lead you on it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is on to the roll call. So for all the commissioners, if once I state your name, if you can confirm that you're in attendance, Commissioner Osland.
Present.
Commissioner Welch.
Present.
Commissioner Huxford. Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Dorr.
Here.
And then, as Jenny said, Commissioner Holte did reach out, and she was traveling for some personal reasons. So I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Holt.
So moved.
Thank you. Let me see what else we got in here.
I'll second.
And his second, thank you for that. And I'd also like to welcome Councilman Peter Shagan and Councilman Ewing, who are in attendance. Next is on to the guest business. So if anybody.
Hey, John.
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion and the second?
Oh, sorry. The second was Commissioner Holt, or sorry, the second was Commissioner.
I was the second.
I was. Commissioner Huxford was a second, and all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioner Huxford. I'm shaking off some rust. Next is the guest business. So for any items not on the agenda, and I'll remind you, too, that this is not pertaining to anything regarding the nonconforming public hearing. So if there's any guests in attendance that have any items not related to that, now is your time to speak. Hearing nothing, I'm going to move approve the minutes from the September fifteenth, twenty twenty one meeting. So I'll give all the commissioners a time to review that. And if anybody has any changes or edits, please say them now. Yes.
We only have one, and it's a weird one. But when did we end? When when did we end that meeting? And like, you know, ultra planet time? I don't know. But if we could just amend the the end time of the meeting. It was it was a great meeting, but we did end it. And it was at a certain time that wasn't reflected correctly. So that was my only addition.
I am changing that to six fifty eight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any other comments? All right, hearing nothing, I I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from September fifteenth, twenty twenty one with Commissioner Huxford's amendments to the ending time of the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Now we're on to the public hearing portion. This is a continued public hearing regarding the nonconforming code. With that, I'm going to open or I'm going to pass it on to the senior planner place for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Cronin. Good evening, commissioners. I'm going to share my screen. I just present prepared a short little PowerPoint for you this evening, just going over the highlights of this code amendment. Let me know if you can see that, or if you have any. Can everyone see it? Okay, great. So before you this evening is a public hearing for the nonconforming code amendments. These are amendments that we've brought to you three times. And at the conclusion of the last meeting on September fifteenth, there was a unanimous decision to move it to a public hearing for tonight on October sixth. And just a little bit of background information on the nonconforming code and what it does. They basically nonconforming regulations basically address existing loss lots, structures, or uses that don't comply with our current zoning regulations. It is the intent and purpose of our code to have all structures and uses eventually come into conformance with all of our land use code and regulations. And this is a city initiated code amendment based on numerous questions that we've had over the years, both at the counter and over the phone regarding structures in the city. And as we've annexed more properties, we have some properties that are have some nonconforming setbacks and various things. So we've identified more and more of that need over the years. And that need to update the code to provide more clarity to staff and property owners. So just to reiterate the project goals, I think we talked about this in the very first session, but our goals with this project were to update the code, follow more traditional zoning law, revise a lot of the definitions that didn't seem to really fit into what traditional zoning law is and what we would like out of the change the code to streamline and simplify the process for staff and property owners to dovetail our code with our shoreline regulations, and then also to consider some different zoning approaches to manage those nonconformities. A little overview on the process. These were introduced to you in June of this year. You hold three work sessions in June, August, and September. I did bring it for a briefing before City Council last week, and City Council had very few questions. They had, I think, two questions, in fact. One doing one asking about the additional stories and how that would work. And then also one having to do with the single family residential, if those were to burn down, how does the supply? So they they really had very few questions on it. Then staff sent a sixty day notice to Department Commerce, and we did issue a CIPA exemption for the amendments on that same day. It's a little bit of highlights of the code amendment, which you have as attachment one to the staff report, and it has basically is a complete rewrite of our existing code at fourteen thirty two. And the new language is shown is shown first, nonintract changes, followed by all the existing language struck out in red. So you can see a clean copy and then what used to be the existing language or the old language. And so this, one of the highlights is that it does not allow a nonconforming use to be enlarged or expanded, which aligns with our current shoreline regulations. That's one of the the dovetailing that we wanted to do. It does allow a nonconforming structure to be altered and enlarged, as long as the extent of the nonconformity is not increased. It does allow a single family residence that's been destroyed to be rebuilt in the same footprint, but not enlarged or expanded, which the current code allows. And when we made some revisions to the code, one of those questions was about the setbacks. So if it goes up a couple stories, then it does have to the second and third story would have to conform to the current setbacks for the zone. It does revise the terminology of nonconformities, including revised new definitions under our definition section under the code, which is fourteen oh eight. And then revises the improvement threshold for repaired or altered nonconforming structures to be twenty five percent, and the destruction threshold to be seventy five percent. And you reaffirmed that seventy five percent at our last meeting. And I think one of the very first topics we talked about was this abandonment, I'm sorry, abandonment termination period. So at what point does a nonconforming use, if it's no longer used at all and no one's there, have to change into a conforming use? We previously had six months in the code, and we changed that to twelve months. And there was discussion about six months being too little and twenty four months seeming to be too long and twelve months being the sweet spot. So that's what the current code reflects. Some of the specific guidance that you provided to staff was on the abandonment, the enlargement, this reconstruction threshold, termination, whether to include amortization provisions, which we heard that that was not preferred, vested rights, and then this discussion about benign versus detrimental. And we did not include the latter because it was a lot a lot harder to implement. You also determined that some areas should not be treated differently than other parts of the city. And I think we just talked, we did just talk about the six months to twelve months. So we revised that period. Considered how the proposed language might encourage or discourage the retention of those single family residences and the threshold for destruction to be at seventy five percent. You also provided feedback on whether those additional stories on a building constitute an expansion. And what we had talked about before was that we get that question quite often about can we go up to expand? And there's not really an explicit answer in the code. So we try to make it, you know, provide language that would be very clear to property owners as well as staff, that yes, you can go up additional stories, so long as you're not increasing the degree of nonconformity and you meet the current zoning setbacks. So based on all of that guidance and input that you provided through the process, we made the revisions to the draft code, and that current code that you have in front of you tonight is attachment one, reflects all of your input throughout this process. So as for our findings and our recommendation, we do believe the code amendment meets the approval criteria for land use code amendments found in our code. It is consistent with goals and policies of the city's comprehensive plan. And I detail those out in the staff report and the specific policies that apply. And also that it's met all of the Growth Management Act requirements that it meets CIPA and our public noticing requirements. And I do have to add here, when we provide public notice, we have not received any public comment on this project to date. So no public comment, whether it was City Council briefing or Planning Commission on it. And then ultimately, we are recommending that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation to City Council to amend the Ellis, sorry, Lake Stevens Municipal Code per attachment one. So that is our recommendation to you this evening, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have at this time and just open it up for for anything that you have thoughts, questions, anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Planner Place. Yeah, this time, do any commissioners have any concerns or questions for Planner Place?
Commissioner Davis?
Um, I wanted to first comment on how, while I think this, our comments from previous work sessions were integrated into the new code. It looks really good to me. And the only question I have is really, it's kind of a small one, and it's probably a function of the fact that I wasn't, I was absent at the last meeting. But I was curious about, it has to do with section fourteen point three two point zero four zero. And the old code had a definition value as appraised value for property tax or the appraised appraisal given by a professional appraiser. And the new language is cleaner and more specific, but it's just assessed value for tax purposes. So I'm curious if there was a discussion about that at the our meeting that I missed. Because that that definitely is a more simple approach, but the there is quite a swing between what a tax appraisal is and what a professional appraisal can be. So I just was curious about the context of that. I like the language, and I was just curious about how that came to be.
Yeah, good question. And I I'll I'll take a first stab at it, and then anyone else can jump in. I I don't recall specific discussion from the with the Planning Commission about assessed value and and please, if anyone else recalls differently, jump in. I I know that staff, when we were going through the amendment, just wanted to keep it as clean as possible. And so that's why we changed it. But I don't remember any of the sessions having detailed discussion about this as value.
Okay, I just, yeah, it makes sense that you would, since the goal was to kind of streamline the, make it easier to understand that it would move to that.
I'll jump in on that. It did come up a couple meetings ago, assessed versus current market value. It was brief. And that was part of the conversation that we had around seventy five percent as well. Because assessed value you at seventy five five percent versus what is perceived as current market value came up. I'm not disputing what's in the wording right now, but I think that it's a good point that these are two different, two different price points in this current market. And yeah, I I think that we did have a conversation on that, if I remember correctly.
I don't, I want to be clear that I don't have an objection to the to that language, especially because the stated goal of the process is to eventually move nonconforming uses into conformity. So I think having the lower number is probably will speed that process. But I just, it was something I noted. So I brought it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Huxford. I don't, I didn't recall that, but I I do recall talking about this seventy five percent threshold. So I'm glad you brought that up because I it must have been brief, and I just didn't remember that. So thank you.
No worries. No worries. I do have a quick question. If are you done, Commissioner Davis? Sorry. Um, on the additional story. Please, what was that conversation with council? I wasn't in on that meeting. Can you delve into that a little bit more about what the additional stories mean that seventy five percent? What was the conversation surrounding that?
Yeah, it was. It was really quite brief. I believe one of the council members just asked. Well, they first commented that they liked the idea of explicitly detailing whether nonconforming uses could add additional stories. And then they were asking specifically, how would that work? And I I was explaining that, you know, they can go vertical. And then there was a discussion about just if they could just be rebuilt in the exact same footprint. And I had answered, yes, that was that was the intent of the code and the proposed change code. And then I recalled that when we did our, we had the last discussion, we added setbacks in there to be very clear about if somebody's building, are they going to go to the existing setbacks or the old setbacks? And Sid staff had determined they would need to go to, since it's a new new stories, they would need to go to the current setbacks. So that was ultimately what that section of code was revised to be, and when we changed that to add setbacks. So at the council, we just wanted to clarify with them, and they were just asking for clarification on how that would work.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Uh, thank you for that discussion right there. I agree with Commissioner Davis. I think that's a great point. I I agree with her as well, from the standpoint of, you know, the seventy five percent versus the tax first market. I think that's a good compromise and just from a simplicity standpoint and from a goal objection to clean up the code and make things easier. I don't have any problems with that at all. And then I also, second, you know, I know it can be from a nonconforming standpoint, there's always the fine line to kind of walk between, you know, the stricter and the more liberals approaches to it, you know, when you're talking about the city's plan and kind of following those guidelines, but not stepping on private property's toes. And I and I do think the city did a good job of, you know, taking our comments, implementing them here. And yeah, as far as as far as I can see, nothing, I don't see any red flags or anything like that. And you know, aside from anything that I hear from other commissioners or from, you know, guests, I think I'm comfortable and, you know, comfortable and ready to vote. So thank you. Do any other commissioners have any other things to add?
Have we asked if there's anybody in the audience that wants to comment in a public comment forum?
I don't think we're there yet unless I been doing this. I was gonna, I was gonna open public comment after our.
Okay, okay. So we are still in in comment period. Okay, got it.
Okay, so hearing nothing, I'd I'd like to lost my sheet. Well, I'd like to open the the public comment portion of the hearing. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments, please raise your hand. And then Jenny, if you can call them, and then once the floor is yours, if you can state your name and your address and your your question for the city. So if there's anybody, now's your time. Now's your chance. All right. Well, it appears there is nobody in the audience. So with that, I'd like to close the public comments portion of the hearing by motion. I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment portion of the hearing. Do I have a second? Mr. Huxford? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. And before we we move to close the public hearing, I want to give, I know we just kind of did that, but I want to give any other commissioners one last chance to make any comments before closing it, and then we can move it to a vote. All right. So hearing nothing, I'd like to again make a motion to close the public hearing on nonconforming code. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. So again, I didn't hear much from the commissioner. So I don't know if, you know, if if you guys want me to jump right in and make it make an action by emotion, or if somebody else would like to make a comment before doing so. You know, I'm more than happy to, but I'll open it up to you for for one second.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think I think we're, if I'm not, hopefully not speaking for everybody, but I know we've had pretty of discussion and workshops on this. So I don't think I think we've pretty much got this one down, but I think we're ready to move forward.
I appreciate it. And thanks for being blunt, too. I need I needed that.
All right. I I I really appreciate the fact that it went back and forth and that the city staff heard, because we had some pretty firm concerns early on. And I think that this reflects that. And I hope that it goes through council as as presented. Yes, I I think it's solid. Do you want me to make a motion?
No, it's okay. I got it. So with that, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to forward a recommendation to the City Council to approve the proposed amendments to the Lake Stevens Municipal Code fourteen dot three two, fourteen dot oh eight, and fourteen dot three eight dot zero one seven to adopt the revised regulations for nonconformities. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. So I think that was unanimous. So with that, we have closed the public hearing on the nonconforming. And the next is on to the discussion items. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Planning Manager Levitan for a briefing on the comprehensive plan update for twenty twenty one.
All right. Thank you, Chair Cronin. So this is going to be a pretty brief discussion. As you'll remember, each year, the city is able to amend its comprehensive plan through a docketing process that comprehensive plan docket was approved by the City Council back in February. It's pretty limited in scope. As we approach the twenty twenty four periodic update to the comprehensive plan, in the next two years, we anticipate just doing some kind of minor cleanup work to reflect demographic information, updated service providers and and the like. So this year is no different as part of the as part of the docketing process, you're also able to amend your comprehensive plan land use map. We are not proposing any amendments this year, other than to update the boundaries to reflect the Machias and Southeast Center local annexations, no changes to actual land use designations. We last bright brief the Planning Commission on this. We went over parks and capital facilities back in early June. And kind of just went over some of the planned changes to that. So those I linked to the staff report back the June second staff report, a link is provided in this meeting staff report, if you'd like to go back over that. And then I just provided a high level summary of some of the proposed changes that are included as part of this year's docket. So we just wanted to give commissioners an opportunity to review that and to weigh in on any additional changes that they think need to be made within this docket. And yeah, that's really the the crux of tonight's presentation. So I'm happy to hear any comments from commissioners.
Thank you, Planning Manager Levitan. And do any commissioners have any comments, questions, or concerns? For David?
I didn't have any anything that I think would need to be added to the the docket for this year. I thought it was pretty comprehensive for what we have.
I'm actually pulling up a couple different screens. So forgive me. Forgive me. I do have a question about the Airbnb stuff that's going on and whether or not that's going to be included in the comp plan. I think that's more of a scheduling issue. So if it's appropriate now to speak to, or if we can do that during commissioner reports, either way, I want to see how, when, and how that's going to be incorporated into the greater good of the city at some point.
Yeah, so that's included. We we had originally included that on the twenty twenty one long range work plan, and then just given how much kind of how big of a work plan that was and that we only just got fully staffed recently, we weren't able to get to that one. But that is something on the code development side that we are planning on carrying over into twenty twenty two. That would mean be more a code amendment as opposed to a comprehensive plan amendment. But we, you know, we would provide consistency in the comprehensive plan based on what we do on the code amendment side of things. So that is something that we're definitely going to be addressing in twenty twenty two.
Mike, might I suggest, and if it's inappropriate at this time, I can certainly do it during my commissioner report, but might I suggest that whenever that gets scheduled that the city staff and I'm happy to help facilitate meet with the eastern side of the mountains. Shalan and Manson, specifically Manson, Washington, has been down this path, and I I think that they have made some choices that they might have done differently. I I I just want us to have the greater grasp of that project. It's it's one of those sleeper items that gets in on our docket. And at the same time, has has caused a lot of concern in other communities that are that are like ours. So I'll I'll keep an eye on that, and I appreciate it coming up in twenty twenty two. But I hope that there will be some pre pre homework on that one.
Yeah, and we can definitely do that as we we're going to be discussing your twenty twenty two long range work plan. I think probably during one of our November meetings, we can talk a little bit more about that during the director's report or the fill in director's report. So yeah, happy to chat about that a little bit more.
Awesome. You, please, if I can be a resource, let me.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Huxford. Yeah, from my point of view, I agree with Commissioner Davis as well. You know, I didn't, I continue to support all the items from the February meeting. But I didn't see, oh, I also support, I read in there that hiring a transportation planning consultant, you know, I think obviously, infrastructure and, you know, having people be able to get around the city is going to be a huge challenge for Lake Stevens as they continue to grow. So, you know, I like seeing resources being deployed towards that. One question I did have was towards the parks, rec and open spaces. And this was more just as I was going through and looking at the red lines on page one, twelve and one thirteen regarding the frontier height development phase. I guess I had confusion on just some of the budgeting. And and again, it's not necessarily the numbers. It's just I'm curious, because I see that in the development, what phase two that we initially voted on, looks like it was for five hundred thousand. And now it says phase two and three is one point five million. But the only change I see is a basketball court to a pickleball court. Then also with the sunset park improvements from a hundred K to five hundred K. And again, the reason I bring this up isn't necessarily from a number standpoint. I can, I understand scope, size, cost change. It's more just from a business standpoint from where, you know, obviously, when you're when we're talking about costs and you're talking to the council and the planning commission, you know, it's hard for us, you know, it's it's hard to know that what we're voting on is of the same, you know, it's it's hard to know that that when we're voting on things, we can, I guess, we can make more educated decisions, you know, if we know those numbers are you know, a little more firm. And like I said, I understand things change and things like that. But I would just hope from a business standpoint, you know, the city is looking at why, you know, why those numbers were so low at the beginning in order for in the future, you know, to try to mitigate some of those mistakes. So then when we do discuss these, you know, they, I guess they hold more or I shouldn't don't want to say hold more weight, but just just that they're closer to what the actual cost is going to be, you know, in fruition.
Yeah, and I think some of those numbers may be, I didn't go back in and do all of the parks updates because I still needed to make a couple of updates to the capital facilities, to the six year and the twenty year table, and then needed to then I always cross reference those to the parks projects that are listed in chapter five. So I think some of those numbers may be a little bit outdated. I'm going to need to take some time in the next few days before I send this off to the Department of Commerce to make sure that those are are accurate. So I I appreciate you going through all those numbers and identifying some areas where we maybe need some changes before we actually send that off to Commerce for official review. where we maybe need some changes before we actually send that off to Commerce for official review.
Thanks. Yeah, appreciate it. Do any other commissioners have any other, uh, comments for discussion?
I actually had a one quick question. Um, there was a, an interesting fact in the documents you gave us. Um, that the median house price in Lake Stevens in two thousand thirteen was two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And I was curious, I know that, um, that we're waiting on new data, um, to come in at the end of the year about growth projections and, um, other, other data, but I'm curious, do, do we have an idea of what the median home price in Lake Stevens is in a more recent sense?
I'm sure that we do. I would have to look what it is for twenty twenty-one because I believe it's gone up about eighteen or twenty percent just this year. Um, and so, um,
Put you on the spot because I've got
Yeah, no, I, I can definitely get that number. I mean, it's, I'm not sure what it is for the entire community. I'm more familiar with what on the, on the market side of things, which is obviously much, much higher than that, more like about three, if not sometimes four times that. Um, and so, yeah, but we can definitely get you that information.
I, I believe it's somewhere around probably four fifty to four seventy right now. The current market rate.
And, and not to belabor the point, but this comes back to that whole appraised value versus, uh, current market value thing that was discussed earlier in the meeting. So, um, very important that those lines be defined and, um, I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to the fact that construction materials keep going up to build a house now is thirty-eight percent and plus what it was eight months ago.
Yeah, and I can get into it a little bit more. I was going to in the director's report, but we can also chat about it now as, as part of the, you know, in advance of the twenty twenty-four update. Uh, just about an hour ago submitted for a grant from the Department of Commerce to develop a housing action plan, um, which would then feed into our housing element as part of the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan update. And so we've asked for, uh, some money from the Department of Commerce for us to really get a good analysis of existing conditions and housing needs across a variety of different housing types and income levels. Um, so that's hoping, we're hopeful that we'll get some funding that we'll be able to hire a consultant in twenty twenty-two and really get into that and really jumpstart the, the twenty twenty-four update. I think that's going to be integral as, as, uh, Chair Cronin noted, we're also going to be, um, hiring a transportation consultant. And then originally as part of the twenty twenty-one docket, there was a proposal to amend the SMP as well. Um, we decided to push that into the twenty twenty-two update. We're going to be pursuing some funding from the Department of Ecology uh, to update our SMP and specifically deal with non-conforming issues and some other items, some of the waterfront residential task force work that was done last summer, uh, summer of twenty twenty. Um, but also really just to account for all of the uh, new residential development that was annexed into, it's not new, but the resident, the residences that were annexed in as part of the Southeast Center local annexation, which, you know, the majority obviously were built under Snohomish County's SMP. There are a number of non-conforming issues. Um, and just differences in the two SMPs. So we really wanted to take a, uh, you know, a more detailed look at that area and just kind of, um, you know, as part of the SMP update. So, um, those are a couple of items I was going to touch on originally during the director's report, but it's, I think it's germane to the comp plan discussion.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments for, uh, Planning Manager Levitan? So with that, I think there's no formal action required. Uh, Senior Planner Levitan, do you have, uh, everything you need from a, uh, the briefing standpoint, or do you have any questions, or should we move on to commissioner reports?
We can go ahead and move on. I'll, I'll just make sure I'm going to go back through this, especially in the capital facilities and parks elements. If there are some easy changes um, within say the housing or land use elements where we can update some numbers, we didn't, you know, for things like average home prices, we can definitely do that. We didn't want to get into the whole buildable lands analysis until we had our updated growth targets. So um, that's something that we plan to do a, pretty much a comprehensive rewrite of that section in future years, but we can maybe clean up some things as well.
Now, the next step is this will come back as a public hearing next, right?
It would. So yeah, we're, we've identified, um, that it would come back in November. So that can be your first meeting in your second, or your second meeting. I think there's only going to be the need for one meeting in November. So we can talk about what the preferences uh, from commissioners either now, or we can talk about that after the commissioner reports. So we can chat about that.
I guess. Uh, well, let, let's save that actually for the, uh, after the commissioner reports before your director's report. I'll save that. So, so with that, I think we're done, we're done with the briefing. And then now it's on to the commissioner reports. Um, let's go with, uh, Commissioner Dorr.
No report this evening. Thanks.
Commissioner Hux.
Uh, you cut out, but it's Commissioner Huxford, yes? I have two, two comments. Uh, one is that I appreciated, um, Director Wright's follow-up from our last meeting on the issue regarding bringing the sewer, um, new sewer lift on Machias. And evidently the issue there is known. Obviously it's known. You have to walk by it to know it. It's not a bus stop for small children, by the way. Horrible, horrible. Uh, but the sewer district is aware of that and the, um, issue is being corrected, but on back order. So that was good information, at least because it had been publicly, publicly noticed. And, uh, um, had reached its end of life of that notice. And so, um, any update to that community, to my, to my community, uh, that can, uh, let them know that there is a fix in the works, um, and any kind of date for a solution there. Uh, the smell is atrocious and small children are standing next to it. Uh, the other thing is that we're coming up on an election and I don't want to get into this, except to say that um, as, uh, members of a commission of people in the community that have volunteered their time, which we also diligently do, and I appreciate all of you for serving on this commission with me. I would hope that, um, we would be diligent in figuring out, um, our direction for the city in our own opinion and then offering those opinions as asked. As I suspect all of you are, I am, and we have ballots arriving next week. So please, please do justice for your city in whatever way you feel best, but, um, let's make sure that people don't sit home on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Huxford. Uh, Commissioner Report, uh, for Commissioner Austin.
Uh, no report tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
Nothing for me tonight.
And also, uh, Commissioner Welsh.
Nothing to report.
And no commissioner report from, uh, Commissioner Cronin as well. Uh, so with that, I'm just give it to Planning Manager Levitan again for the, uh, planning director's report. And then we can also talk about the, at the end of that planning manager Levitan, if we can talk about the, the meeting, um, for next month as well.
All right. Great. Thank you, Chair Cronin. Just a couple of items. So we had a, uh, workshop last night, a work session with the city council where, um, I presented a similar slideshow on just growth, um, in the city, kind of the buildable lands. Uh, twenty forty-four growth targets process that, uh, Russ had gone over with you, I believe at our last meeting. Um, so they really hung in there after spending a, a good, long time talking about, uh, nutrients and affluence and all sorts of other things related to sewage. They then had suffered through my hour presentation. Um, so that was a good discussion. I've got a lot of good feedback. We will be bringing, uh, the permissible uses public hearing is scheduled for next week at the city council. Um, and just to give you notice on that, the, uh, I just learned today or last night that the meeting is going to be a hybrid meeting. Um, so that's something that the city is currently working on. Uh, Kelly Chell and the, um, city clerk is working on the logistics of that. So that's something that we can potentially discuss, get some guidance from the city clerk and from Mayor Gailey, um, on what that, um, pretends to, you know, potential for the planning commission. So that's something we can talk about in the future and I'll need to get some input from Russ and from others on that one. And then, yeah, as I mentioned, we just submitted for the housing action plan grant today. We should, uh, hear about that later this year. Um, we'll be submitting for an SMP grant from Department of Ecology. And then, yeah, finally, um, for, we, there's no need for a second meeting in October. We had already chatted about that. So no meeting on October twentieth. Uh, for November, we really, there's the public hearing for the uh, comp plan docket. And then there's a discussion of, you know, at least a an initial discussion of the twenty twenty-two work plan, uh, that we'd like to get on, um, the agenda for November. So those are the only two items. So there's really only the need for one meeting. So I'd welcome input if there are dates that work better. We can go ahead and get that on the books. Either would work for the comprehensive plan. Um, so it's kind of up to the discretion of commissioners, which meeting you'd like to have in November.
Um, for my part, I could do either. So, um, I, I guess I, I am flexible on that one.
I prefer the second, but I'm flexible as well.
When would the how would this then fit into the city council? Cause they would have to have this go to them after that. So would it be easier for us to do it first? So they can have it as soon as possible to them?
Yeah, the way that the schedule works, um, if they were to go in the first meeting, it would still be pretty tight to get it on their second meeting in November and it would be the week of Thanksgiving, which typically isn't ideal. So as long as we get it on their December agenda, it just needs to be adopted by the end of the year. We could potentially do it at their first meeting of December. We could still do it at their first meeting of December if, if the planning commission public hearing was the second meeting of November, it would still work logistically.
I'll, I'll jump in. I have no preference either. Um, both work for me.
Yeah, either one would work for me.
I, my only concern is that it's published that we do the first and optional third week of each month. So that's either the third of November or the seventeenth, which is the week before Thanksgiving. So, so, um, if it's published that we meet on the first of each month, I would suggest that we honor that and meet on the third, but I, I am here on the seventeenth as well.
I would agree, I'd agree with Commissioner Huxford on that idea. For the first week in, uh, November.
Okay. Yeah, happy to do that. We'll plan on November third then.
Thank you all for that discussion. Is, is that everything, uh, Senior Planner Levitan, is that everything for the director's report?
Yeah, that's all that I have tonight. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody for, uh, joining tonight and struggling through me, uh, kicking off the rest with this. So I hope you all have a, uh, good night and we'll see you next, uh, we'll see you on November third for the next planning commission meeting.
Hey, hey, how about we make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.